All the Brimfield Township Board of Trustees meeting to order, roll call for attendance, please.
Um, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Alright, so we have full board. Now please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're always grateful for the many blessings you bestow upon our lives. We thank you for this fall season and what it brings for us. And Lord, we just thank you for this nation we live in, Lord, the freedoms and rights and privileges we have that so often taken for granted. Lord, we have an upcoming election. I pray for wisdom for the voters, pray for character and integrity for the candidates involved. And now today, Lord, we ask your blessing upon all these leaders that stand before us as they minister for the good of Brimfield. And we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Alright, well, moving in first, two announcements and correspondences. Do we have any announcements or correspondences?
Yeah, Nick, I have one. I just want to announce that, uh, yours truly, we're going to be donating a meal to the Kelso House for the, the Election Day Dinner, and I would encourage people to come to that. I mean, this is a hundred percent of, you know, what I donate and with the Kelso House, you know, the pies and all that is, goes, the money goes directly back to operation of the Kelso House, which could use all the dollars they can. And they do, as we all know, the Kelso House does maintain the history of Brimfield. So I think it's a very worthwhile cause and...
Do you know how much that dinner costs?
I think, I think, I think they're charging twelve bucks a person or something like that.
Something like that? Okay.
Yep. How much is it?
Nine.
Uh, four till seven. Four to seven. So yeah, it's a great, I don't know, Dead Chick, how long has that Election Day Dinner been going? Longer than you.
Back in the sixties, if not before.
Right.
Yeah.
And they, boy, they still...
Do we, do we put that on the sign?
Uh, I think they're doing a lot. I shared it on social media and stuff, so, yeah. And they do have a great selection of pies and desserts, so, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Any other announcements or correspondences for the board?
I had a quick one. Just a reminder that, um, the Food Bank is taking donations on Tuesday and Thursday mornings from eight to eleven thirty a.m. They have an increased need for food, so if you do have some extra items to donate, that would be greatly appreciated. And they are also doing the Adopt a Child program again this year that's getting started, and they'll have the tags at Hometown Bank.
Thank you, Cassie.
You're welcome.
Any other announcements or correspondences? Alright, we have no scheduled meeting guests today, so I will start with a motion to approve the October first, twenty twenty-five, um, meeting minutes. That was not part of that, so I'll entertain that.
So moved.
And I will second that for discussion.
Alright, discussion? Any comments on those meeting minutes?
Fine.
Okay, hearing none, roll call for approval.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the ten fif- October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second for discussion. Any comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mike?
I'm pretty sure I was not at that meeting, so I'm gonna abstain.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Half of it.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Um, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I need to add something on zoning. I got a little informational piece I'd like to do at the beginning of zoning. It's not very long.
So new business under updates?
Yeah.
Do you want to make that number three, or do you want to do that first?
First would be fine, get it out of the way.
Update. And then one will become two, and two will become three.
Okay, thank you.
We also need to add under executive session, uh, number two, motion to enter into executive session to discuss pending or imminent litigation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, one twenty-one point twenty-two G three.
Okay, but can you, can you read that again, Nick?
Yep, motion to enter into executive session-
Okay.
-to discuss pending or imminent litigation-
Okay, got it.
And this will be pursuant to O R C one twenty-one point twenty-two G three.
Okay.
Any other? Changes? Hearing none, roll call for approval of the motion, amended motion?
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Alright, we'll move, uh, purchase orders. I'll entertain a motion to approve purchase orders as presented.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to accept warrants as presented.
So moved.
I'll, I'll second.
Go ahead.
Mike?
I'm gonna abstain. I didn't get a chance to sign.
Alright, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes. Motion passes. Alright, we will now move into public comment. Uh, we want to remind everybody there is a three-minute limit per person. We do thank you in advance for being here today and for your comments. Um, we will start at the top of the list. Uh, Jerry Yafizico, I'm trying not to mess that up. I do apologize.
Yes, Zesco.
Yezesko, thank you, sir.
I kind of figured it was gonna be all right. I live in the Ro- oh, good morning, all first. Um, I live in the Roland Hills Development.
I can't hear.
I live in the Roland Hills Development on Heron Drive, and, uh, lately, they have been sealing the cracks in the road. And historically, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, about five, six years ago, the road was done, resurfaced, thank you. But within five weeks, they went through and started filling cracks. So something told me at that time that maybe it wasn't done correctly, bad material, I don't know. But the road looked like crap, plain and simple. I implore you people to drive there and look what it looks like today, because it looks like a Google Earth of the road. There is so much sealer on that road. Twenty percent, twenty-five percent of that road is all gloss black sealer. You can actually feel it when you drive. Um, it's embarrassing. We pay a lot of money. Everybody in that development works there, lives there, spends a lot of money in taxes, and spends a lot of money in upkeep. We all do. I'm at the point where I don't like even my friends coming over, because they ask me, "What happened to your road?" Just go look. You don't have to believe me. I'm just gonna give you the eyeball at first, but go look. Um, tell me what you think, because I will be at the next meeting, and I am going to be contacting all the other neighbors. Um, I didn't know about this meeting until last night, because I would have had a lot of neighbors here, but that's all I ask for. Um, take a look at it, because it's, it's not right. Um, it's horrible, so that's all I have, but thank you very much.
Thanks for your time. Alright, next, we're gonna have Pat Blair.
Good morning, folks. Uh, can everybody hear me okay? Uh, there's a couple of things that I'm concerned with as a citizen of Brimfield Township. One is, uh, and the most pressing issue is Facebook. Now, probably everybody in this room has a Facebook account. I even have a Facebook account. I don't use it. But Facebook is notorious for hiding different personality traits. It has no purpose or place in township government, nor does it have any place or purpose in the election cycle coming up. It's a place for predators to hide behind the keyboard. Now, why do I tell you this? As, well, as a fifteen-year certified internet security services professional working for state, local, and national groups, I've seen many, many cases of this infiltrate our society and try to change perception and the way people address issues. Uh, one of those particular types of predators that are out there are narcissists. And if you look up the definition of narcissist, um, in any dictionary, if you still use them, or on the web, or do an A I, which I did this morning, you'll see that narcissistic people are attracted to government. I think that's very clear and evident in today's society. You combine that with Facebook, and it'll take you down the wrong path as a group. This board was designed by the Ohio Revised Code to lead the people. And what I implore you to do is do that in every decision. You are leading the people for the better good of the residents. Please see, keep that thought in mind this election cycle and in everything you do every day. Uh, I do appreciate the pastor coming in and praying for the group, and if you don't respect him, that's fine, but respect the God that our country is formed under. For this, I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, sir. Uh, next, we have Tony Martin.
Good morning. Um, I've lived here for about five years. Uh, during that time, I've had problems with drainage in my ditch. I have reached out to Dave several times. He has come out. Um, a couple of little things have been done. The last time you were out, I met with you, and my neighbor, he said that they're gonna start digging up, uh, his pipe and all that. That was a couple of months ago. I even reached out to Nick, uh, and then I think it was Mike that was you that came out. Um, I haven't seen anything done. Um, granted, it's been dry, but we're gonna be getting some rain. I'd like to see something being done and have it fixed. Uh, Dave, you've given me several options of what can get done. I'm just wondering when that might be done. And you've said it's been on the top of your list for a couple of years. I'm just wondering when we might get something going, because the water's draining. I can't mow my ditch. Uh, the excessive wet ground has caused degradation of my fence sooner than it probably would be, so I'd like, wondering when something might be done that we can fix. Portage County, I think you said, was out, and they've snaked it, and there's some kind of blockage a few houses down, but, I mean, when can we get something done that I don't have this issue? Because it's majority of the front of my house, and when that water sits there for a while, then I just can't mow a good portion of my yard. Mosquitoes are bad enough with the wooded area, but that just adds to it, and, um, fall coming, the rain, I got leaves. Now I gotta wait till the spring and it dries out to get what leaves. I can't get out of the ditch to lessen the impedance of the water flow, so... Is there something we can get doing? I mean, uh, I'm not, you know, we, you said about outsourcing or sub- subbing it out to get something done, and when, when that might get done, or we see some work? Uh, you did come out, and they painted some lines, but that was like two months ago, and I don't know when, when something might happen here.
It's coming. I, I'm just, right now, we're in the midst of crack sealing, which we've had talks with, but, uh, no, we're gonna, in my report, we're, we're getting ready to start doing ditching projects.
Is that gonna ha- be able to happen this fall, or?
Yes, it's, it's coming this fall. Like I told you when we were out there before-
Okay.
I put the paint marks out. I gotta call Oops. When you start seeing the flags being put in, then you're gonna see us, we'll be there within the next couple of days.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that finishes up our public comment section from our signup sheet. We'll move into safety concerns. Any safety concerns? Hearing none?
We got some salt, right, Dave?
What's that?
Did we get any salt yet?
I ain't got none yet. We have, I mean, we have our salt company and stuff, so we're good.
Okay. We'll move into the business portion of our meeting, and we'll turn the floor over to Chief Mooney.
Thanks, Nick. Just a couple of items under new business for you this morning. Nothing under old business. Uh, one update, we'll be holding our Thanksgiving Philly Cruiser event. We'll be at Walmart on Saturday, November eighth. From ten a.m. to six p.m., we'll be collecting non-perishable food donations, as well as any monetary donations. That'll be directly benefiting our Brimfield community covered here in town, so Saturday, November eighth, you'll see us out there at that event. There's one other item. I wanted to update you on this, not on the agenda, and that's letting the board know that we just had two of our officers, Officer Nolan Rumbler and Officer Justin Kacinic, recently completed the Portage County Crisis Intervention Training Program. That's sponsored by the Portage County Mental Health and Recovery Board. So after, uh, with those two officers completing that week-long program, we now have all of our officers trained and certified on C I T through the county. So, uh, the Mental Health and Recovery Board does a good job putting that program on every year to benefit, uh, local first responders. I do have one item that will require our board approval this morning, and that is the acceptance of a donation to the Brimfield Township Police Department from Apollo Heating and Cooling and Plumbing in the amount of five thousand two hundred and seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. This is from the golf outing that they held over the summer, where they donated a portion of their proceeds to the police department.
Ah, that's great.
I'll, uh, make a motion to accept the donation for the Brimfield Township Police Department from Apollo Heating and Cooling.
I will second that.
And that was from the golf outing, you said?
Yes, sir.
Thank you to Apollo Heating and Cooling for that. That is great. We appreciate it.
There's a thank you letter that we put out for that as well.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, roll call for acceptance?
Alright, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that's all I have for you this morning.
Any questions for police department? Okay, hearing none, we will move into fire department. Assistant Chief, where's yours?
Uh, good morning, everybody. Uh, I'm Ron Goodspeed. I'm the Assistant Fire Chief in place for Chief Malley today. Um, under new business, uh, the new firefighter, entry-level firefighters that we hired, they are at the Fire Academy down in Columbus. They graduate this Friday. Chief Malley and myself will be going down there to watch them graduate, and possibly some other, uh, members. Um, this is an early announcement, but it's, um, something that the residents always look, look forward to. But we will be doing Santa on the fire truck. Um, gifts will start being collected after Thanksgiving, so, um, more details to come on that. Um, as for the fire truck, we had written a grant for our aging, um, second engine. Um, the federal grant, the twenty twenty-five federal grant that was written for the fire truck, um, has not closed, and they're still optimistic on getting that grant. Um, so...
Brian, how much was the grant you were trying for?
I believe it was a, a new fire truck is anywhere from nine hundred to one point one million, so I don't know the exact amount.
But up in that area?
Up in that area, correct.
Okay. And that's not a ma- we don't match it. There were...
No, it's, um, there's a certain percentage. I'm not sure on the percentage that we have to pay, maybe a five or ten percent.
Yeah, remember how that grant used to really work. You get, there's usually good chances you get it.
Yeah, I mean, we got one with the squad and some other stuff as well, but, um...
Then when Chief Keller got in, it seemed like they just stopped doing them.
Yeah.
So now they're coming back online again, hopefully?
Yeah, uh, when the, from, this is all from what I've heard, when the, the government shut down at the beginning, uh, they shut down the grant, um, section of the government, kind of put it on hold to check some things, and then that's why the grant-writing company is still optimistic. The way the grant-writing company works is they write the grants. They're usually pretty, have a pretty high success rate, and they know which ones that, um, our township might benefit for the most. And then if they don't get it, they rewrite it again.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And, uh, under board approval, there is, uh, nothing needed at this time.
Any questions for fire department? Hearing none, we'll move into administration.
Uh, yeah, just a couple of items for the board this morning under new business. Nothing under old business today. Our twenty twenty-six benefits open enrollment period for all our employees is gonna open this Friday, and that will run from this Friday through November tenth for benefit enrollments for next year. I'll be putting out a communication to all of our staff later today on that piece. Uh, second item, as I provided some information to the board on this, as a follow-up to Otarma's Risk Control Visit they had here with us on the township on September twenty-third. There were some recommendations made following that Risk Control Visit, and I am in communication with the department heads on those recommendations for follow-up. We'll need to supply some feedback back to Otarma within sixty days on how we're gonna address those recommendations. So you have that communication, and I'll be following up with the appropriate department heads to give our response, and I'll keep the board apprised of that.
Alright, any questions under administration?
Oh, you're doing a great job over there. I appreciate you, you and Chris stepping in, filling the void. Are you tired of it yet? Are, are you getting tired yet?
No, no. That's all I have under administration.
Okay. Alright, we'll move into zoning and economic development.
Hey, uh, thanks, Mike. Did you wanna...
Yeah, you don't, no old business, right?
No.
Okay, I did tell Mike I wanted to read something. I'm telling you, I still go up to the restaurant every once in a while, and I'm telling you, sometimes I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna put a mask on so people don't know who I am, but, uh, uh, zoning has become a very hot topic during this election, and there are a lot of untruths circulating within, about our dedicated zoning, zoning boards. Slowing growth and limited development is a common theme. The Jeds and development in our dedicated zones have led to economic growth, which have greatly reduced the need for more levies and given needed funds, funding to our police via roads and general fund. I just want to bring to your attention what was brought into our township, thanks to Mike Ladd, trustees, and our zoning board. For example, six, since twenty eighteen, nine hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents of zoning fees have gone into the general fund to be used in the township budget. The Talmage and Kent Jeds this year have received one million, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighteen cents, of which thirty percent goes to police, thirty percent goes to fire, thirty percent goes to road, and ten percent goes into the general fund. And just to clear up some rumors, which I heard this weekend, the, the distribution to the departments has not changed since the Jeds interception twenty years ago. Just a quick note, thanks to zoning this year, fire received an additional fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and five cents from revenue streams that Mike Ladd had found for the fire department. Without his guidance, this would have been dollars fire would not have received. In a simple fact, Mike Ladd and zoning boards have created and implemented TIFs through the trustees, which are tax increment financings. These TIFs generate dollars for Portage County, our full field school system, which this week, we signed a check for over ninety thousand dollars to the schools, and additional tech, TIF revenue has been directed to the police department, fire, roads, and parks. TIFs are a win-win operation, option for any local government. The other day, I got to talk to a younger restaurant who is against all new subdivisions in Brimfield. I had to ask him where he lived, and he said he was one of our newer residents who moved into town and moved into a sub- subdivision. I said, "Welcome to Brimfield, and it's a great community, and do you realize by you buying a home in our subdivision, you are helping drive the numbers up, and a big part of the reason why developers want to build in Brimfield? We all get it. Brimfield is a place to be because of all the amenities. We are a growing community, and people want to be here. Yes, and don't be mad at me, but all these new residents who have chosen Brimfield as a home have contributed to its growth. This is not a bad thing, and I welcome you all here. I too once moved from Cogga Falls to call Brimfield my home, but let's admit it. Unless our families have been here for generations, we are all part of the catalyst that created more rental properties, new homes, and opportunities for retiring farmers to sell their land for profit in the subdivision, and you can't blame them. All I am saying to the Brimfield residents is be careful what you think you wish for. You can't have it both ways. Either we find common ground using common sense and work with our great zoning folks and trustees, or some would like to maybe micromanage these independent boards or tear up zoning as some suggest, which would force us back to asking for more levies from our already overburdened taxpayer. You see, without economic development, we cannot continue to support our police, fire, and roads departments to the extent needed to fund them. The only other option would be to run more levies to attempt to fill the gla- the gap. I, for one, have paid enough taxes, and so have those from newlyweds, young families, to seniors, citizens. I've heard it clear, they are overtaxed. I hope all of you who get elected next week remember, we work for the citizens of Brimfield, not for those with oversized egos or ourselves. We just do what we have to do for the benefit of all. Please use common sense and support the zoning board members, who are our neighbors and friends. And thank you, Mike Ladd, and Jen D, and Kayla, and our zoning boards for all they do selfishly for our community, unselfishly for our community. Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mike. That was great, Nick. Uh, updates. Brimfield Township will be receiving the two thousand and twenty-five Located Award for Portage County Development Board. Uh, this is for the Village of Saint Edward Senior Living Facility. Uh, it's eighty-three jobs created, twenty-one point two million invested, um, roughly four point eight million in payroll. Uh, that'd be, uh, an additional one million dollars into the tax, uh, revenue for the Jeds with Talmage. This project was, uh, in, uh, completed with the Port Authority, Portage County, and Brimfield Township. This is the largest project in two thousand and twenty-five Portage County development, and I do have, uh, the list of developments in, in the box there. Uh, we're sending notices out to the Fields, uh, local schools for the following TIFs. These are all brand-new TIFs Mark and I have worked on, along with the developers. Uh, one is Petro's Development, which is the Woodland Reserve Condos. Um, this development, uh, whether some people like the new housing there or not with the condos, this is a much-welcome, uh, development, because this is bringing water and sewer down State Route forty-three with the tax revenues created from that development. Um, this has been a long time where forty-three has not had water and sewer, and you've seen, you know, uh, no development and no tax revenue for, uh, police, fire, roads. Uh, we are gonna bring that.
Before the Kent, Kent Jeds.
Before the Kent Jeds, correct. And then, uh, we have Dunkin' Donuts. Uh, this allocation is per the O R C. We TIF the, uh, tax dollars at Dunkin' Donuts to use as per the O R C at the discretion of the trustees. As well as Willen Engineering, uh, we are allocating, uh, those tax dollars to go as, as per needed, uh, and how the trustees choose to use it. So those are the ones that we're sending notices out. You'll see some further TIF information at the next meeting. Actually, two meetings, I think. We have a fourteen-day notice, so it'll be the, the meeting after, uh, to approve the TIFs once we have the notices out to the schools. And then Drug Mart is scheduled to open November twelfth, uh, two thousand and twenty-five. Came out really nice. I like the, the stonework and, and the architecture and how it came out. Uh, they're gonna finish up some landscaping, and things look good.
Have you gotten in there yet, or?
Uh, yeah, I've been in a couple, tended to nice.
Any questions for zoning and economic developments? Hearing none, we'll move into red flag.
Alright, Nick, uh, just some follow-ups, uh, some old business. We're finishing up crack sealing. Actually, today will be our last day. Uh, the Howe Road Project for Fortage Parks is moving along real well, as there was a couple hiccups with, uh, piping going across the road, but that's all done now. They should be doing the restoration to the roadways here pretty soon. Uh, some new business. We're getting ready to start doing ditching projects. Soon as we get done with the crack seal, today, we will move into ditching projects. Uh, I'm looking into doing some catch basin work at, uh, Marsh Landing Estates. There's, uh, like, six of them that are starting to fail, so we want to get them replaced too. Uh, some catch basin work at Beach Crest Allotment. We have area over there that we need to work on. Uh, and to the gentleman's comments about the crack sealing, uh, after you get done with a project of paving, you do crack seal right off the bat. You crack seal around the monuments, driveways, and all, uh, seal joints between new asphalt, old asphalt, so you do crack seal right off the bat, off the start, to seal all them off the water, doesn't get into the roadways. Right now, the crack sealing we're doing, and your allotment is extensive, but it also preserves the road from getting potholes- but it also preserves the road from getting potholes and all that. When water gets in there, it'll blow the road apart. It is a little extensive in your development this time around because the cracks really took off on it. So we are working on keeping that together. The only other, the next phase would be either we let it go and blow apart or we chip and seal it in future, you know, but you need to keep the strong base underneath and that's what the crack ceiling is for. That's up to the board over here.
We usually don't allow interaction during the business portion, so.
So, but I mean, yes, it is very extensive over on that roadway, but again, to keep the road from completely starting to disintegrate, we crack seal a lot in that roadway.
Is there a reason Dave that there's that many cracks there? Like is it just a bad core, was it a bad sub foundation?
No. It's just wear and tear on a roadway. You got garbage trucks, you got school buses, you got everything that goes through there, it just, it slowly starts putting surface cracks in it. So you seal off the surface cracks to keep the water from getting underneath. Again, it could be some subbase problems, but it's, this is our option to keep it from continuing where it blows big potholes up in the roadway.
Is it a workmanship issue with the person who installed the road?
Back, probably when they put the allotment in, yes.
Back that way, so wasn't this most recent project or not?
Every development in Brimfield Township, we can go to that point, was never put in the right way. The subbases are terrible. I mean, we're not the only township that has that problem, Suffield does, Ritztown does, Manaway. It's back in the older days of how they put subdivisions in. They didn't put them in the proper way, they didn't put stone bases, they didn't put drainage in these things, they just put asphalt on top of what was there and that's what you got. For us to go into a division like per se your allotment, if you want it completely reconstructed, we would have to go to you as taxpayers and that's you as homeowners to help fund the project because it wouldn't be just three hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna be millions of dollars. So see, that's where we don't have the budget to go in there and just completely take a road down to the subbase and start over again.
Do I have to come for the next meeting to respond to that?
Why don't you just, you could call him.
Yeah, you can meet with him afterwards. Yeah. So I would, I would meet with, I would meet with Dave afterwards?
I understand what you're saying on the size, totally understand.
Mike, can you, Mike, can you meet with Dave and him after the meeting just as the road is on?
Yeah.
Have that conversation somewhere at?
Yeah, Dave will definitely talk to you. I just, I know what he's talking about, some of these subdivisions, they just, they did the cheapest thing they could do.
Well, when did we, Mike Ladd, when did we update those subdivision regulations? Remember we did that big piece and part of that was changing how the subbase was done because we were seeing these issues in Ritztown here.
Yeah, I believe we instituted the subdivision regulations in two thousand and twenty-three and I was part of that board as well as you were. And, you know, the way things are constructed nowadays is completely different as well as there's full-time inspection from engineering firms and the developers need to and have to put money into escrow and then the county hires an engineering firm to watch it full-time. There are, you know, subbase, there's, you know, in some cases twelve inches of asphalt depending on what the subdivision is and what it needs, if it's industrial or what have you. Dave is right, when we looked at the roads prior to this subdivision regulation board, many of them are missing under drains, the subbase is bad if there's subbase in there. I don't think anything was proof rolled back in the day. You know, for those of you that don't know what proof rolling is, it's, it's something that I allocated for on that board. It's you load up a tandem axle dump truck approximately fifty-five, sixty thousand pounds. You drive over every inch of that subbase and if it moves, you take the soil out and you fix it and you get a geotechnical engineer decide whether you need geo grid or ones and twos or however you have to fix it. That wasn't done in the day. So you have a ton of reflective cracks that come through because your base is, if your base is bad, the reflective cracks are going to come through. We worked on that, unfortunately, the old ones, Dave has got his hands full with, but the new ones, you're not going to have that issue.
So run more of these trash trucks, recycling trucks, that all starts to affect?
Right, your subbase is going to start failing after, you know, some years. I mean, up and down traffic on it, depend on the soil underneath, all that kind of stuff, so. So that's where we're at with most of our developments in town. We're trying to fix them up, get rid of the potholes and stuff and then with the crack seal and keep them together, but it's, again, I mean, some of these developments, your best avenue would be to, I mean, hey, say, just like we just did at Chestnut. You rip out a lot of the subbase and you put stone back in and then, but you're also looking at a project that wasn't even a mile of road and it costs us three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You know, and that didn't even finish the whole road, that was just partial. You're looking at a lot of, a lot of funds that would have to go in and just completely dismantle a road and start from scratch. I mean, I've been told of roads that have been, from older people that lived in these developments, how they muddied in the concrete and how they muddied in the asphalt. They just poured over top and just smashed it down as they went. It is what it is, we just have to work with what we got, so. And after that, that concludes my report.
Any other questions for red flag? And then we'll move into Parks and Parks.
Good morning, I just have a couple of informational items and one item for approval. Old Business, I attended the Fall Falcon Frenzy Trunk Retreat event on the eighteenth, that went really well. We got to interact with a bunch of people, so that was really nice. The Boo Cruise Halloween Decorating Contest is still going on, that ends on Halloween. And then the winners will be announced on Monday, November third. On November sixth, we will be having a Parks Community Forum here at the Town Hall from six to seven thirty P M. I invite everybody to attend, which is going to be a community discussion about how we can move our parks forward in two thousand and twenty-six. And then on November thirtieth, we will have our annual Hometown Christmas Event at the Town Hall and the Fire Station from five to seven P M. Santa will be attending, he'll be, kids can come and visit Santa. We have a couple of food trucks attending this year. The Girl Scout Troop is, they picked up the nativity scene and they are working on that now, so we'll have that nice and repainted for the events and we'll do our tree lighting and some, we're going to have some community groups do some crafting games and things as well, so. And then under New Business, the employees at the library reported to me that there were four broken light ballasts. These were lights that were original to the building before the township took over, they were approximately ten to fifteen years old. They just needed repairs. So J and J Plumbing came out and did the repairs at a cost of one thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. So I spoke with Jasmine and I'm requesting that we request reimbursement from NOPEC to upgrade those lights.
I'll entertain a motion for the submission of the repairs to the NOPEC for reimbursements.
I will go ahead and make that motion.
Any questions or discussion on that?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's probably a good thing, use NOPEC. I mean, are these more energy efficient maybe?
They are, yeah, these are about ten to fifteen-year-old lights, so they replace them with more efficient lights.
Further questions or comments, we'll call for approval.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, that concludes my report.
All right, any questions for Parks and Parks? Okay, here, now we'll go into Information Technology. Joe, Laura's yours.
Okay, the only I have is a conclusion of the locks for the admin department. Those are all been installed and we're all, we're supposed to meet with the doors. So all the doors in the admin area have been rekeyed, I guess. So now we have the ability, if you need to, we lock our individual offices.
Have we distributed keys to people?
Yes.
All right, any questions for I T? All right, thank you, appreciate it. Cemetery, I know we had a deed we signed, any other?
No, just that, that one deed came through, we signed it, it's good.
Fiscal Office.
All right. All right, from Old Business, NOPEC Grants Fund Update. NOPEC has approved invoices from Binks for fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety. That was for the replacement of our HVAC here and art contracting for five thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-four cents and funds should be received within the next four to six weeks. For New Business, just need board approval for our D H O TIF collateral assignment agreement. Basically, council has recommended or figured that it would be best for us to reword how that, that agreement reads. So the amendment ensures that the township is not obligated beyond actual TIF collections and supports the bank's collateral position for the loan that they use for public infrastructure. So basically, it was modified to say amounts remaining due to say eligible cost for reimbursement since we most likely won't get the amount requested, so just whatever we are, we are receiving for the TIF. And, yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the collateral assignment amendment between Brimfield Township, Brimfield Development Company, L T V and Web Banko Bank Incorporated entitled. So in the motion?
So move.
I'll second for discussion. Any questions on this, this is more of an administrative function about how they get paid from those TIF dollars.
Correct.
Questions on that? Roll call.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any questions for this one? Thank you, Jasmine, you did good work, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, we now have executive sessions, before that, we'll open it up for the good of Brimfield Township, any comments on board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to revised code one twenty-one point twenty-two G one to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official or the investigation of charges or complaints against the public employee or official.
So move.
Sue makes a motion, I was second. Roll call for executive session.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then I also have a second motion on the floor for second executive session. Motion to enter into executive session to discuss pending or imminent litigation pursuant to a higher revised code, section one twenty-one point twenty-two G three. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, it will be adjourned to executive session at eight forty-two A M.
Okay.
All right, we're out of the executive sessions. Um, based on our executive sessions, I'd like to uh make a motion to enter into an agreement with Fire Chief Craig Malali amending his employment agreement with the township and resolving the pending disciplinary matter with a period of suspension and other appropriate terms. I need a second for discussion.
I'll second for discussion.
All right. Based on our uh discussion in there, Chief Malali's contract was expiring on twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-five, and we are expect- and we plan to extend that through September thirteenth of twenty twenty-eight. Um, this agreement will resolve a pending disciplinary matter and include a suspension period among other things. The new agreement does not include a salary raise, it does continue the annual three percents that were in the agreement. The change to the agreement also brings the employment agreement in line with the new sick leave policy to be consistent with the changes to other contracts that we have for the most recent contracts. So this'll make all of the sick leave policy that was our concern straighten that up in this area with the investigation.
So as we move forward with new contracts, they're all gonna sort of mirror each other.
As it goes, try to line them up as best as we can, as we try to tweak them a little bit, but the sick leave was an area that we did want, and we had saw inconsistencies, and we wanted that straightened out amongst the policies.
And we do also have inconsistencies with vehicles, so I mean, I'm hoping somewhere along the line, the new board will address these issues and clarify them.
Yeah, I think we need to, that's another area that we did discuss today and identify that we look at. But for now, that's, that's the proposal that we have um for Chief Malali's contract.
Okay, so we're extending it to twenty twenty, three-year period?
Three-year period, it would actually end September thirteenth.
Does that coincide with the agreement?
Yeah, it coincides with the agreement.
With the, okay.
Yeah.
We don't need to name that agreement, I mean with the uh-
The last chance agreement.
Yeah, with the last chance.
Last chance agreement, okay.
Is there any other discussion on that?
I mean, Mark pretty much clarified my questions, Sue?
I'm fine.
Counsel answer for me also. All right, we'll call it.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. Executive, uh, see if you have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion, and um I would like to move that Mike Ladd's contract be extended to twenty thirty.
Motion on the floor, we need a second to support that.
Okay, I'll second, second that.
Open the floor for discussion.
For discussion, um, he is not requesting an increase in salary. Um, based upon the number of years that he has had in government, he is entitled to one more week vacation, which would, would be a total of six weeks, and let's see. I think that's all, that's-
It also included um just a clarification, even though it's been administratively clarified behind the scenes, that it would include five personal days.
Five personal days, okay.
And that's just to make up for where it wasn't?
Right, so he has been getting them, but we administratively found that, so this just clarifies it in the contract.
So this new contract is, will pretty much fall in line with the other contracts we've done?
Um, I believe it also updates the language to sick leave to correct.
Right, Roy?
Yes. So, discussion point on this, Mike Ladd's contract is not up until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. On the contracts that we did approve for, uh, those approved two meetings ago with Mike and Sue for Dave Ruffner, well, expired, did not have a contract. Craig Malali, Chief Malali's contract expired in twenty twenty-five. This is an ask to-
Okay.
All right, we're out of the executive sessions. Based on our executive sessions, I'd like to make a motion to enter into an agreement with Fire Chief Craig Malali amending his employment agreement with the township and resolving the pending disciplinary matter with a period of suspension and other appropriate terms. I need a second for discussion.
I'll second for discussion.
All right. Based on our discussion in there, Chief Malali's contract was expiring on 12/31/2025, and we are expect- we plan to extend that through September 13th of 2028. This agreement will resolve a pending disciplinary matter and include a suspension period among other things. The new agreement does not include a salary raise. It does continue the annual 30% that were in the agreement. The change to the agreement also brings the employment agreement in line with the new sick leave policy to be consistent with the changes to other contracts that we have or the most recent contract. So this will make all of the sick leave policy that was our concern, straighten that up, and this handles the investigation.
So as we move forward with new contracts, they're all gonna sort of mirror each other.
As it goes, try to line them up as best as we can, as we try to tweak them a little bit, but the sick leave was an area that we did want to, we had saw inconsistencies and we wanted to straighten out amongst the policies.
We do also have inconsistencies with vehicles, so I mean, I'm hoping somewhere along the line, the new board will address these issues and clarify them.
Yeah, I think we need to, that's another area that we did discuss today and identify that we need to look at. But for now, that's, that's the proposal that we have for Chief Malali's contract.
Okay, so we're extending it to 2020, three-year period?
Three-year period, it would actually end September 13th.
Does that coincide with the agreement?
Yeah, it coincides with the agreement.
With the, okay. We don't need to name that agreement, I mean with the...
The last chance.
Yeah, with last chance.
Last chance agreement, okay.
Is there any other discussion on it?
Mark pretty much clarified my questions. Sue?
I'm fine.
Counsel answer for me, also. All right, we'll call that.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. Executive, Sue, I think you have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion, and I would like to move that Mike Ladd's contract be extended to 2030.
Motion on the floor, we need a second to support that.
Okay, I'll second, second that.
Open the floor for discussion.
For discussion? He is not requesting an increase in salary. Based upon the number of years that he has had in government, he is entitled to one more week vacation, which would, would be a total of six weeks. And, let's see. I think that's all, that's...
It also included, just a clarification, even though it's been administratively clarified behind the scenes, that it would include five personal days.
Five personal days, okay.
And that's just to make up for where it wasn't?
Right, so he has been getting them, but we administratively found that, so this just clarifies it in the contract.
So this new contract is, will pretty much fall in line with the other contracts we've done?
I believe it also updates the language to sick leave to correct.
Right, Roy?
Yes. So, discussion point on this, Mike Ladd's contract is not up until December 31st, 2026. The contracts that we did approve for, those approved two meetings ago with Mike and Sue for Dave Ruffner, well, expired, did not have a contract. Craig Malali, Chief Malali's contract expired in 2025. This is an ask to extend the contract a year early, so it's an opening of the contract to extend it for one year. I'm in agreement with the vacation piece, if the years of service exists, I believe that that could be an amendment to that contract while it's open. The personal days we have settled, and that's clerical piece in there, I agree with that. I have concerns with extending a contract to 2030 during an election season and a change in board when there's one year left. If the contract ended in 2025, the board would need to take some action on that, but it still has 14 months left on it. I just, I can't support changing that contract at this time. With a new board, it could be revisited in January of 2026, but as it stands, I believe that that should sit because it's the last 14 months on it. I would be open to a discussion of amending the motion and adding the week of vacation and the personal days into it now, but not the extension to 2030.
And my thoughts are, with the amount of revenue zoning has brought in and, you know, the development that's happened, it's all managed development and it's with the money that's gonna be coming in, I mean, Mike truly has done a great job, and at times I do, I do feel like, you know, there are some of the new candidates are definitely against zoning, and, and all I can do is not vote for myself, I vote for the people of Brentfield. I, I as one, refuse to see more levies be levied on our community when we have the revenue streams coming in. Thanks to zoning and Mike Ladd, that we, I would hate to lose someone of his nature, someone of his professionalism. I mean, who else even knows anything about TIPS? I mean, I think what we're paying Mike, you know, he's not being paid enough as far as I'm concerned, so I would like to see Mike be here for at least whatever agreement we decide, period.
My concern isn't about performance or work completed, it's more about the timing of it, there's still 14 months left on that contract. By opening this up, does that open us up to other contracts that are gonna wanna be extended with inside the township then too before that 2025 deadline? I get it's an election, but we served the will of the board, and I'm not saying that Mike does a bad job, I've definitely had a complaint about his performance, we've had that discussion. It's, we're going into an election, and there's gonna be a new board starting in January 1st. I can't see opening a contract and extending it when there's 14 months left on it. I just, I can't support that.
Nothing but the new candidates coming in, but there, how many of them have had any experience with zoning, other than some beefs with zoning? I mean, I came in here 24 years ago, I didn't know squat, but in 24 years, I have learned a lot, and, you know, I got four meetings left, and I intend on being a trustee till the last meeting, so whoever wins, you know, get used to it, I'm still here. I'm still gonna vote.
Sue, any input?
Well, I think what we discussed in the executive session has been very beneficial to me. I understand that the state of Ohio now has in the, in the House, or whatever you call it, they want to do away with people paying property tax. So I'm thinking to myself that may has a possibility of going through, and that eliminates that stream of income for us. And I don't want to give any new levies to the employees, and my, my heartfelt job is to put the, the residents first, which I think I've tried to do that over 28 years, and the economic development program that we have here, we have developed less than 5% of our total area of Brentfield, and if, we're trying to keep it all where it is down there at 18. And I just know that if Mr. Ladd wasn't here, that with his expertise, we wouldn't be in the situation we are now. And I just became aware too that St. Edwards is going to be hiring approximately 83 employees, which is going to bring in like $4.8 million payroll to those employees. So that's just one example of, of what has happened in Brentfield and why we're moving so fast. So whether his contract would actually expire in '26, I don't feel that that has that much bearing on what we're dealing with compared to what we may lose.
I also have concerns in the contract, and this is across all the contracts, that I, in my opinion, needs to be revisited from communication with the public is the light personal use of vehicles. I think vehicles should be limited to township business only, and that language in those contracts is a concern for me, and that still exists in this contract. That's, that's another reason I can't support the contract business.
Mike has mentioned to you, I mean, you're always welcome to further open the contracts again, because I think you need to look at all of them.
Yeah.
And you agree with that, so I mean, you know, okay.
You know, my concern is if we open this one that expires in '26, are we gonna open the other ones too then? Is this board gonna reset all the contracts before transition power comes?
Well, by the time they get done, I'll be out of office, so the board will get to look at them.
What I'm saying is, we still got four meetings left, and you, your word, so I'm still here, I'm going to vote, get used to it, so are we gonna open the rest of the contracts and set this up before, before transition of power?
With Mike, I really, I think he's an integral piece of our revenue stream, period, so...
And, and I don't, I don't disagree that he hasn't done pieces, I just don't think this is the time to do this.
I'm ready to vote.
And I know Nick, and I mean, I just, and you know it as well as I do, if you run any more levies, it's gonna be a tough sell.
Oh, yeah, I don't support running more levies, but what I do support is making sure that we're, we're seven days, six days out from the election, and now we're deciding to do this, I just, if the contract ended in December, yeah, we definitely should be having this conversation, but it doesn't end until December 2026, it's 14 months out.
If it wasn't so toxic out there, I don't think this would be the, this wouldn't have been a discussion.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. All right, I guess my last statement on it is, we know that the general fund is tight. Until we have those numbers projections for 2026, I'm just not supportive of making any contractual changes that direct admin budget at this time. We hear no other comments? We'll call for vote, please.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
No.
Motion passes.
All right, and then I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting if there's no other business. All right, we'll call for approval?
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. Executive, Sue, I think you have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion, and I would like to move that Mike Ladd's contract be extended to 2030.
Motion on the floor, we need a second to support that?
Okay, I'll second, second that.
Open the floor for discussion.
For discussion? He is not requesting an increase in salary. Based upon the number of years that he has had in government, he is entitled to one more week vacation, which would, would be a total of six weeks. And, let's see. I think that's all, that's...
It also included, just a clarification, even though it's been administratively clarified behind the scenes, that it would include five personal days.
Five personal days, okay.
And that's just to make up for where it wasn't?
Right, so he has been getting them, but we administratively found that, so this just clarifies it in the contract.
So this new contract is, will pretty much fall in line with the other contracts we've done?
I believe it also updates the language to sick leave to correct.
Right, Roy?
Yes. So, discussion point on this, Mike Ladd's contract is not up until December 31st, 2026. The contracts that we did approve for, those approved two meetings ago with Mike and Sue for Dave Ruffner, well, expired, did not have a contract. Craig Malali, Chief Malali's contract expired in 2025. This is an ask to extend the contract a year early, so it's an opening of the contract to extend it for one year. I'm in agreement with the vacation piece, if the years of service exist, I believe that that could be an amendment to that contract while it's open. The personal days we have settled, and that's clerical piece in there, I agree with that. I have concerns with extending a contract to 2030 during an election season and a change in board when there's one year left. If the contract ended in 2025, the board would need to take some action on that, but it still has 14 months left on it. I just, I can't support changing that contract at this time. With a new board, it could be revisited in January of 2026, but as it stands, I believe that that should sit because it's the last 14 months on it. I would be open to a discussion of amending the motion and adding the week of vacation and the personal days into it now, but not the extension to 2030.
And my, and my thoughts are, with the amount of revenue zoning has brought in and, you know, the development that's happened, it's all managed development, and it's with the money that's gonna be coming in, I mean, Mike truly has done a great job, and at times I do, I do feel like, you know, there are some of the new candidates are definitely against zoning, and, and all I can do is not vote for myself, I vote for the people of Brentfield. I, I as one, refuse to see more levies be levied on our community when we have the revenue streams coming in. Thanks to zoning and Mike Ladd, that we, I would hate to lose someone of his nature, someone of his professionalism. I mean, who else even knows anything about TIPS? I mean, I think what we're paying Mike, you know, he's not being paid enough as far as I'm concerned, so I would like to see Mike be here for at least whatever agreement we decide, period.
My concern isn't about performance or work completed, it's more about the timing of it, there's still 14 months left on that contract. By opening this up, does that open us up to other contracts that are gonna wanna be extended with inside the township then too before that 2025 deadline? I get it's an election, but we served the will of the board, and I'm not saying that Mike does a bad job, I've definitely had a complaint about his performance, we've had that discussion. It's, we're going into an election, and there's gonna be a new board starting in January 1st. I can't see opening a contract and extending it when there's 14 months left on it. I just, I can't support that.
Nothing but the new candidates coming in, but there, how many of them have had any experience with zoning, other than some beefs with zoning? I mean, I came in here 24 years ago, I didn't know squat, but in 24 years, I have learned a lot, and, you know, I got four meetings left, and I intend on being a trustee till the last meeting, so whoever wins, you know, get used to it, I'm still here. I'm still gonna vote. Sue, any input?
Well, I think what we discussed in the executive session has been very beneficial to me. I understand that the state of Ohio now has in the, in the House, or whatever you call it, they want to do away with people paying property tax. So I'm thinking to myself that may has a possibility of going through, and that eliminates that stream of income for us. And I don't want to give any new levies to the employees, and my, my heartfelt job is to put the, the residents first, which I think I've tried to do that over 28 years, and the economic development program that we have here, we have developed less than 5% of our total area of Brentfield, and if, we're trying to keep it all where it is down there at 18. And I just know that if Mr. Ladd wasn't here, that with his expertise, we wouldn't be in the situation we are now. And I just became aware too that St. Edward's is going to be hiring approximately 83 employees, which is going to bring in like $4.8 million payroll to those employees. So that's just one example of, of what has happened in Brentfield and why we're moving so fast. So whether his contract would actually expire in '26, I don't feel that that has that much bearing on what we're dealing with compared to what we may lose.
I also have concerns in the contract, and this is across all the contracts, that I, in my opinion, needs to be revisited from communication with the public is the light personal use of vehicles. I think vehicles should be limited to township business only, and that language in those contracts is a concern for me, and that still exists in this contract. That's, that's another reason I can't support the contract business.
Mike has mentioned to you, I mean, you're always welcome to further open the contracts again, because I think you need to look at all of them.
Yeah.
And you agree with that, so I mean, you know, okay.
You know, my concern is if we open this one that expires in '26, are we gonna open the other ones too then? Is this board gonna reset all the contracts before transition power comes?
Well, by the time they get done, I'll be out of office, so the board will get to look at them.
What I'm saying is, we still got four meetings left, and you, your word, so I'm still here, I'm going to vote, get used to it, so are we gonna open the rest of the contracts and set this up before, before transition of power?
With Mike, I really, I think he's an integral piece of our revenue stream, period, so...
And, and I don't, I don't disagree that he hasn't done pieces, I just don't think this is the time to do this.
I'm ready to vote.
And I know Nick, and I mean, I just, and you know it as well as I do, if you run any more levies, it's gonna be a tough sell.
Oh, yeah, I don't support running more levies, but what I do support is making sure that we're, we're seven days, six days out from the election, and now we're deciding to do this, I just, if the contract ended in December, yeah, we definitely should be having this conversation, but it doesn't end until December 2026, it's 14 months out.
If it wasn't so toxic out there, I don't think this would be the, this wouldn't have been a discussion.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. All right, I guess my last statement on it is, we know that the general fund is tight. Until we have those numbers projections for 2026, I'm just not supportive of making any contractual changes that direct admin budget at this time. We hear no other comments? We'll call for vote, please.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
No.
Motion passes.
All right. We have another motion on the floor from the executive session. The November meeting, the upcoming meeting on November...
12.
12 is going to be moved, I'll make a motion to move the meeting to Monday, November 10th at 8:00 a.m.
I will second that, Nick.
All right, so we got a motion, a second on the floor, any discussion? And Sue, you're gonna be out of town, and I'm gonna be in a training, so we had to move that to Monday, November 10th at 8:00 a.m. All right, we'll call for approval?
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and then I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting if there's no other business.
I will make that motion.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, meeting adjourned, 10:17. Have a good day.
Thank you.